The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. This evening, we have the honor of being visited by a group of the Parkside Baptist Youth who are going to lead us in our pledge. If you will come up here, Abby Walker, Grayson Powell, Paige Jones, Savannah Smith, and Xavier They wanted to come up on the diet. So, you know what? I kind of got ahead of myself. We haven't, we haven't had the invocation yet. So, my friend Jeff Humphries and the pastor of Parkside Baptist Church will lead us in our invocation before we say the pledge.
Outstanding. Thank you. Let's pray together. So, Lord, we just thank you for all the good things that you bring to our lives, Lord, and we thank you that one of those great and good things is our city, Dennison, Texas. Lord, we just thank you for all the beautiful history that we have in our 150 years, ways that you have used people in this city to literally change the world. And, Lord, we look forward to the people that you are going to be raising up to change the world in these next 150 years from here, Lord. Thank you for our council, our mayor, our city leaders that are setting us up to be able to do that well, Lord, through our schools, our community, in every way. Lord, give them wisdom as they make decisions for the great things that are coming our way. And, Lord, let tonight just be another step in that direction. Thank you so much for being our God and being in front of us in all these things. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, ladies and gentlemen, anytime you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very, very much for doing that.
May we hijack this for just one second for you?
Certainly may.
Thank you so much. Parkside is really privileged to get to be here tonight, and we have a little presentation we would like to make to y'all. Parkside wants to say happy birthday to Dennison in a very special way tonight. This past month, Jerry Kaufman, who is the father of Karen Avery over here, a native of Dennison, retired as our senior adult minister at the age of 83 after 60-plus years of ministry, serving churches in Texas and in California. Jerry has spent and still spends his life helping and serving others, just like other great Dennisonites like Ike and Major Butler and other Dennison leaders that we celebrate often around here. One of the ways that Jerry serves our church is through the writing of daily devotions. And for a season, Jerry wrote about the things he remembered about growing up in Dennison, Texas, and as he does so well, he connected those memories to biblical truths that helped us know a little bit more about who God is and who He wants to be in our lives. In honor of Dennison's 150th birthday, Parkside Baptist Church has published these devotions in a book specific to our city. Tonight, we want to say thank you to our city council and to our mayor, whose current leadership is paving the way for the great future that God is blessing us with by giving you a hardbound copy of this book. Parkside is proud to be in this city, for this city, for the glory of God, and we look forward to doing our part to see Dennison continue to make a difference in the lives of people locally, nationally, and globally around the world. So, the guys, that's why they were coming up there, because they got a gift they want to bring you.
Thank you so much.
All right, stick 'em, guys.
Thank you. Wow, what a treasure.
Thank you all for letting me do this.
This evening, we have with us Vicki McCormick, Texas Society Daughters of the American Revolution, who are here to accept a proclamation honoring the signing of our Constitution. And I think that there is no document that is better honored for, because it is the basis of what makes us such a great nation. So Vicki, if you will meet me down below at the podium, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September the 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now, therefore, I, Janet Gott, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Dennison, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitutional Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and frameworks of the Constitution Act in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and reflect on the privileges of being an American, an American with all the rights and responsibilities with that privilege involves. In witness here, oh, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Dennison to be affixed this sixth day of September 2022. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, Dennison, Texas.
Thank you very much.
And ladies, thank you for all you do to make sure that we honor our Constitution.
Thank you, Janet.
At this time, we have another very special guest, Dr. David Kirkbride, who is our new superintendent, and he is going to give us an update regarding future planning. Dr. Kirkbride, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Gott, Councilman. Appreciate you guys very much for allowing me a few minutes of your time this evening. I know your agenda is full, so thank you for letting me address you guys tonight. Before I talk with you about the district's planning process for the future, I'd like to thank the council and their staff for their efforts and commitment to ensuring Dennison is a true community of choice. Your efforts are obvious and appreciated, and I know you guys do not hear that enough. As citizens of Dennison, my wife Christine and I are so grateful to be part of the Dennison community, and we are very proud to continue to raise our children in Dennison, Texas. So, just a quick thank you to you guys this evening. It goes without saying, but it needs to be said, that it is extremely important that the city and the district work closely together. This will always be important, it always has been important, but never as important as it is during these unprecedented times of growth. What you do matters to us, and what we do matters to you. With that in mind, it is so important that we keep the lines of communication open. As you are likely aware, the DISD Board of Trustees has formed a facilities planning committee that has been tasked with conducting a comprehensive study of the facility needs of the district for the short term, one to two years, intermediate, three to five years, and long term, six to 10 years. The committee began meeting last month and is scheduled to meet nine to 10 more times between now and the first couple of weeks of December. If it's agreeable with the council, I'd like to update you periodically as this process unfolds. Again, I think this would be a great way to keep the lines of communication between the city and the district open. The Facilities Planning Committee is a 42-member committee comprised of a cross-section of our community. There are two people from each of the seven trustee wards, there are several DISD staff members, two parent representatives from each campus, representatives from the city, the chamber, and the Dennison Development Alliance. Dr. George Hatfield and Kelly Spiegel are the co-chairs of the committee, and they'll work very closely with Steve Holsey of Corrigan Architects, and of course, myself, to lead the process. Councilman Crowley and Hander are also members of our committee. This committee is a group of people who are excited to accept this charge. The two meetings that we've had, the room has just been full of an excited energy, and so I'm encouraged by that. Each meeting will be held at a different DISD campus so that members can get a good perspective on the district's facilities. Tonight, I'll briefly update you on the first two meetings and give you a quick preview as to what's to come the remainder of this month. The first meeting was held at the Administration Building. Introductions were made, the charge was given by the School Board President, Mr. Bob Roden. Meeting two was last week at Scott Middle School, and Bobby Attaberry and Tony Kai came and made presentations about the developments that are ongoing and the future developments that are anticipated in the city. And I'll say that that opened the eyes of many in the room. It was a crowded room, and it got everybody's attention of what's to come. We'll have our third meeting next Tuesday at B. McDaniel, and that too is going to be an interesting meeting. Our demographers are going to present a report that we've been anxiously waiting for. I don't have that in my hands yet, but we hope to have that sometime this week. That'll be presented by Zonda, which was formerly Templeton. The fourth meeting is next Saturday, and that is a work session that's going to be at the DISD Service Center, and that session is going to be really important to the future of this district, because that is where we'll begin the process of deciding what the framework of our district is going to look like. And what I mean by the framework is the size of future campuses, how many high schools, one versus two, and we've all had these conversations in the, in the community, middle school size, those sorts of conversations, very, very important. So, that's next Saturday that that process will begin. As I mentioned earlier, I'd like to provide periodic updates, maybe three, including tonight's update, just so that you're aware of how things are progressing. I'll stay in touch with Mr. Attaberry and Mayor Gott about scheduling additional updates. I would encourage you to review the district's website over the next few months. After each meeting, we'll post information that was discussed in each meeting. So currently, there's information about those first two meetings that I referenced, and it's available to you online. I'd encourage you to go check that out. It's on the very front page of our website. The website also lists all the committee members, so if at any point in time you have questions that you'd like to ask of any of those people, of course, myself, Dr. Hatfield, Kelly Spiegel, anyone that's part of the committee, feel free to do so. And then one final piece of information before I wrap up, because like I said, I know you guys are busy tonight. The district has a student enrollment, as of today, we got our 18th day count today, of 4,871 students, which is an increase from the last day of school last year of 4,621 students. That's an increase of 250 students from May until today. That's a little over a 5% increase, so you guys know that that's a significant number for the district and our community. So, that's all I really have. Again, I want to thank you for your time this evening, allow me this opportunity. I'm glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Dr. Kirkbride?
Dr. Kirkbride, I just want to thank you for not calling a meeting this Saturday for the Texas-Alabama game. Thank you very much.
What time's the game?
Well, Dr. Kirkbride, we appreciate you so much, and as you've heard me say before, and I'll say it again, we can do what we do without the district, and so we appreciate you and our relationship.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this point in time, in every meeting, we set aside time for any citizen to comment on any agenda item that is, that is listed, any action item that is listed on the agenda. We have, we have one request to speak card, Donald Rossi. Would you come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Donald Rossi. I live at 4107 West Crawford Street here in the city of Dennison.
Okay, and, and what, what was it that you wanted to comment?
I came to, my, my understanding was that tonight was the public hearing regarding the edulorm, or what us regular folk know as property tax rates for, for the upcoming year. And having done a little bit of homework, my understanding is that the council proposes setting the rate at the same rate as last year. Am I correct about that? That's the point six, yeah, okay. Unfortunately, that, while that, while that, while that sounds nice, it's actually a tax increase. It will cost the person, the average person having a property appraised at the average value here in Dennison, more money this year at a time when people are already facing unprecedented inflation and other rising costs. We just have a lot of people who can't afford that, and I'm here to urge the council to, to adopt the no new revenue tax rate, which would truly be holding on taxes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no other requests to speak, so that will conclude the public comments. The consent agenda, item 4C needs to be pulled and put on a future agenda due to some clerical errors in that ordinance, and item 4I needs to be pulled for future analysis. So, the, the motion for the consent agenda should reflect that those two items have been pulled.
Mayor, I would like to make the motion that we approve the consent agenda excluding item C and item I.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. At this point in time, we're going to move, well, where, where are, oh, I'm looking in the wrong place. We're going to move 6A up prior to beginning our public hearings. Lori, I think you're going to introduce our presenter.
The Dennison Development Alliance Board of Directors met on August 18th, 2022, and approved their budget. That's going to be presented this evening. DDA is funded through a 4A sales tax, interest in leased income, and carryover funds, funds from the same sources. Tony Kai, DDA president and certified economic developer, is here to present DDA's budget to council for approval this evening. Tony Kai.
Mr. Kai?
Thank you for that. That's the best introduction I've ever had at a city council. Counsel, and Honorable Mayor, you've received our budget. Don't have a lot to go over, but I just want to hit on a couple of things and answer any questions. I think the good news is on our incoming 4A sales tax revenue, we typically budget 2% or 3%, because we're very conservative. This year, we're budgeting 5%, which is going to be probably half of what we actually saw in our total budget increase for the city and DDA this past year. So, that's positive news as we continue to grow and grow our tax base. Just a couple of things on our administrative assist, estimated expenses on our administrative budget. Our annual meeting, we're budgeting 5,000 more than we did last year, because that's what it cost us last year to have it, and I appreciate everybody that was there, but there was a lot of people there, so we don't charge for that. That's open to the public. So, until some decision is made to start charging for that, we're just going to have to increase that budget as we keep growing that, and the cost of doing business, as we know, has gone up. Going down to administrative expenses, I wanted to go over the salaries, because there's a significant increase there. The Board of Director is recommending an 8.4% increase for the president, which, that's me, and I appreciate that recommendation from the board. Secondly, you know, Mr. Myers left to go to Gainesville. We've been advertising that position since he left in the normal locations, state and federal, i.e. economic development organizations, where we're usually post. We posted that job from 80, 85,000 to 115,000, and we did not receive a single resume from anyone that had any experience in economic development, so we're going to bump that a little bit. We have hired a headhunter, so I do believe we can get that down from the 115 with the headhunter doing the search for us. But we're putting in, that's extra, we're putting in 125 as the budget, so in case we find the right person, it's going to take that much, we don't have to come back to the council and amend the budget. Hopefully, we can do it for less than that. And then lastly, we have Shelley Cassell as our front, front desk person, but I know you all know her and her capabilities, and we are very extremely happy to have her on staff, especially with Williams' departure. So, her and Farrah are carrying, carrying a lot of weight now, and I want to make sure she stays. So, she's currently at $20 an hour, and she works part-time, 25 hours a week, so I want to move that to $25 an hour. So, that's a summary of that line item. If you have any questions, be glad to answer those. Moving on to program expenses, under workforce development, we have a $59,000 less budget, because last year, we paid for two years of outreach specialists. Those are the individuals who are going out into the school for AMP program, as well as other job placement activities to assist the school district. We did agree to pay for the sewer line out on Highway 75 on 16 acres that, between Highway 75 and Crawford Street, we agreed to pay three years of that bond that was passed, and then the city's going to reimburse us at some point, and we also agreed to pay the 276 engineering fee for that sewer line, but that project's moving along. That's a 30 to 40 million dollar project for the city of Dennison, so we're glad that we could partner with the city and get that done. Surplus text dot tracks at John Mansville, there's two triangular pieces that were part of the east property line of JM, and I've been going through the process with text dot to acquire those two, to add that to our, to our total east property line and clean, clean that property line up. So, that's all, we're very into that process. We had to get an appraisal done, so the purchase price for those two is 32,000, so that's what that is. And another big number is the fire suppression ceiling and ceiling, ceiling walls inside these downtown buildings. This is a pro, a project in Simp that we put together a few years ago after the fire downtown, and I think you're all aware of what's going on downtown, and I think we have eight potential candidates for cost share for that program, so we're budgeting 350, maybe. Maybe that'll take care of it, but hopefully, we'll have a lot of fire systems and ceiling done on, on Main Street in the next, this, this coming year, all the buildings get built out. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Kai? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate all that you do, Tony.
Thank you.
This is an action item?
Mayor, I'll take some action. I move to approve the Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year 2023 budget as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, returning to our agenda. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting the city of Dennison budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget. Ms. Alsipaw?
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The public hearing and adoption of the budget is set for the meeting scheduled this evening, September the 6th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of the city of Dennison. This budget has been six, six months in the making, and we are here. There have been several meetings and discussions regarding the needs of staff to better serve the citizens of our community. We held a workshop back in June with council, and we presented updates in July and August. Our proposed budget has been posted on our website since August 5th, and has been updated continuously. It has also been available through our city clerk's office. So now for a recap of our final budget figures. Beginning with the general operating fund, we are looking at ending current year with 69 days of reserve, and we are anticipating ending next year with 65 days of reserve. Both years are above the required minimum of 60 days. On the utility operating fund, we are looking at ending our year with 81 days of reserve and anticipating ending next year with 74 days of reserve. This also falls within the 60 to 90 days required. In addition to our operating funds, we also have several restricted funds. As you know, money that is held in these funds is restricted to specific projects and capital. To give a few examples, we have a street fund, a park and recreation fund, cemetery fund, and several grant funds. I do want to point out a few things that this budget provides for. On the general fund side, it reflects funding methods for a new fire truck and three refuse trucks. On the utility fund side, we have various capital, including a sludge press, a generator, and upgrades to our water treatment plant. The budget supports the addition of three new staffing positions, emergency management coordinator, a facilities maintenance coordinator, and a utility worker for Main Street. It also supports pay increases, which include 2% to 4% COLA adjustment for non-civil service staff, an average 4.29 market adjustment where necessary. Fire civil service is to receive a 7% increase, and police civil service is to receive a 10% increase. The budget also includes increases to various line items to offset rising costs, such as increased landfill costs, fuel costs, electric costs, and just general supplies increases. So tonight's staff recommends holding the public hearing and funding the projects and program enhancements identified in the proposed budget, and also approving the fiscal year 23 budget ordinance as presented.
Questions for Ms. Alsipaw?
So, with that street improvement fund, when I was looking over it, it was, it looked like there was $200,000 that were budgeted for the I-Kai project?
Yes.
But before any of that was spent, we would have, it'd have to go before the council, correct? Because we haven't approved that.
If, if it's approved tonight, the fund should be available to move forward with that. that. But if there's any particular expense that's fifty thousand or more, that would come before council.
Any further questions for Ms. Osseball? Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, he has to make the motion before we do the roll call vote. Oh, well, I guess we did. I am really off my game. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. And this does require a roll call vote, so is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the city of Dennison budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-two, and ending on September thirty, twenty twenty-three, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Oh, roll call vote. Ms., Ms. Wallantine?
All right. Does it say your last name? Please say yes or no. Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Courtright is out, and I'm shutting off the lights. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor God?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Doty is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Spiegel is absent.
The motion carries. All right. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of two billion, two hundred and twenty-three million, four hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, levying the ad valorem taxes of the city of Dennison, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the city of Dennison for the year twenty twenty-two, in the amount of point six five two zero three four for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation and providing for the appointment of such ad valorem taxes. Ms. Osseball?
Y'all may get tired of hearing me tonight. This budget that was just approved reflects general fund revenues totaling nearly forty million dollars. This total is supported in part by the proposed tax rate of point six five two zero three four. This is the same tax rate as twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one taxes. This rate is higher than the no new revenue tax rate of twenty twenty-two, which is set at point six zero three zero four six, but it's lower than the voter approval rate of point seven seven two five zero three. The Grayson Central Appraisal District assessed the city of Dennison appraisal values at two billion, two hundred and twenty-three million, four hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The adoption of the proposed tax rate is necessary to support the fiscal year twenty-three budget. So staff recommends holding the public hearing and adopting the ordinance on the tax rate.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, Pro, Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of Grayson County Appraisal District in the amount of two point two two three four oh two point, or eight ninety-seven, levying the ad valorem taxes of the city of Dennison on all property tax, both personal and real, in the city of Dennison for the year twenty twenty-two, in the amount of zero point six five two zero three four for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantine?
All right. Does it say your last name? Please say yes or no. Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Courtright is absent. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor God?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Doty is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Spiegel is absent. With that, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion, have a public hearing, and take action on approving the submission of a project proposal for consideration of funding through the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Officer, Office Criminal Justice Division, Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and consider approving a resolution of support for the application. Ms. Bowen?
Good evening, mayor, council. The Office of Governor posted a, a funding opportunity for bullet-resistant shields to be purchased, and staff are looking at developing an application. This is through the Public Safety Office, the Criminal Justice Division, and we are looking at submitting a proposal for four of these bullet-resistant shields at a total project cost of a little over seventeen thousand. There is no match requirement for this grant. The priority for this grant is for peace officers that may be responding to school safety emergencies, and part of the application process is that we have to submit a resolution of support, and so we are here asking for that support from council.
Questions for Ms. Bowen? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the submission of a project proposal for consideration of funding through the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Criminal Justice Division, Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant Program, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and approve a resolution in support of this application. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Ms. Osseball?
If the city is adopting a budget that requires more property tax revenue than the previous year, then council must also vote separately to ratify this tax increase. Even though our tax rate will remain the same, due to increased property values and new properties added to the role, this will increase our overall tax revenue and requires council action. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the tax increase that is reflected in the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? Discussion from council. This does require a roll call vote. A motion?
Mayor, I move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, no, we have to have a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantine?
All right. Councilmember Hander, yes or no?
Yes.
Council, let the record reflect that Councilmember Courtright is absent. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor God?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Doty is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Spiegel is absent. With that, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item six C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a change order to the Designing Downtown Dennison, R-D three, Phase One contract with Piazza Construction for an increase of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Attaberry?
Thank you, mayor and council. What you see is change order number three for the D three project. Change order number one was when we changed Houston Street and had to deal with all the rock excavation down there and additional utilities. Change order number two is actually a deduct in the amount because we had some savings, and this change order number three is going to be an add to that budget. This includes rock excavation. It includes a ten-inch water line that we had to replace for about four hundred feet here on Main Street, that as we uncovered it was, the elevation was too high. We couldn't pour the new street over it, so we had to change that, lower it, put in a new water line. We also had increases from suppliers for concrete materials and pipe materials that, while that's a guaranteed price from our general contractor at the beginning, they do have escalation clauses in the contract, and as we all know, material cost has gone through the roof. Fuel surcharges was part of that, and there was about a hundred thousand dollars in rock excavation that was unplanned for. Most of that was on Austin Street and in the two alleys coming up to Austin Street. So hopefully, we're finished with this, and that will be the end of this change order. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Attaberry? Okay. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the change order for three hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, ninety-nine dollars and thirty-three cents with Piazza Construction for Phase One, a Designing Downtown Dennison project, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Project updates. Receive a report and hold a discussion on upcoming RJN sanitary sewer smoke testing project. You know what, Irwin? I can never pronounce your last name, so.
Pereira.
Pereira.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to present on a project that we're doing right now. Actually, it started today, and it's sanitary sewer system smoke testing. And this first, it's a pretty short presentation. The first graphic is basically, just shows you kind of how that sets up. The real reason we do this is because of INI. We like to use that acronym a lot in public works. It basically means inflow and infiltration. Inflow being storm water that gets into the sewer collection system. When that happens, the capacity that the system was designed for is reduced and can't convey the wastewater we need to use the system for. So, and then infiltration is typically a result of broken pipes that we have not identified yet, and groundwater likes to seep in there and get the rain, you get the groundwater, and pretty soon, you can have a real problem. So what we, one of the ways that you can combat this and identify where the leaks and the causes of the INI are is through smoke testing. So we partnered with RJN Group to do some smoke testing, and I think we have four separate areas. And it started this week, and we are excited to locate all those broken pipes and incorrect connections to our wastewater collection system so we can get to digging them up and getting them fixed. The three pictures around the slide just illustrate kind of what you see out there when smoke testing is being, is going on, and we've identified a, a source of infiltration or inflow. You can see the smoke emit, and it basically gives us a laser focus where the problem is. The second slide I have is synopsis of where we're going to be doing the testing. We have four locations and multiple linear feet. The map is just showing you one of those areas. I use this one because it's on Steer Street, so we're going to have the most residents in that area, most homes impacted potentially if smoke were to be emitting from their yard. So one of the ways we notify citizens is through door hangers. There's an example of the one we're using on the right-hand side. And so they're going to get these door hangers before the smoke testing occurs so that they have something to look at, read, and kind of understand what it is. And then we're circulating announcements to all of our folks that take phone calls from the public so that they're prepared to answer those inquiries, and we've already had a few. So, but this is something we're really happy to be able to do and hopefully get our collection system back to where it was designed to be in collecting as much wastewater as possible and as little storm water and groundwater as possible. With that, I take any questions you all might have?
Questions for Mr. Pereira? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This was an information-only item, does not require action by the council. Pursuant to chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to check, chapter five five one dot zero eight seven, discuss information received regarding development prospects in tax investment, reinvestment zone number two. The time is six forty-five, and the council now is in executive session.